CCJJ CAB Fiscal Year Fifteen Grant Application, Mr. McGowan.
Mayor, I can't say that either, but we have Danielle Esparza here tonight that will speak on it, and we also have Ms. Michael Anne that's on the board, and we may have some others that are here, but Mrs. Esparza, please, or any of that you have that wanted to address the commission.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor can say to seek an increasing of funding?
I think you maybe need to come to this room here, please.
Would you just identify yourself? Just identify yourself to the general public, please.
I apologize, young lady.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. My name is Danielle Esparza, and I am Colfax County Continuum Juvenile Justice Continuum Advisory Coordinator, and today Erica Meadows is here present. She is a great member of the board, and she also works with CYFD, and she'd like to share her standpoint as being a board member and also being present in CYFD. And after that, we're going to go into informing you all on where the program is and where we'd like to expand. We're asking to expand services to all of Colfax County, and the need and the desires of the demand is necessary due to a lot of statistics that have been proven to us and provided from New Mexico YRRS and also from case reports, and we feel that it's definitely at a stand point and it's at a point where it's ready to move forward. Due to low funding this year, though, we are having to budget what services are applicable and that we can actually implement into the programs. Therefore, the increase in the funding would go ahead and cover our personnel expenses, other costs of the program, and it would provide us the assistance that we need to move forward and to expand services to all of Colfax County. And without any further ado, Ms. Erica?
Hi, my name's Erica Meadows. I'm the supervisor for the juvenile probation office with CYFD here in Rattone, and I cover all of Colfax and Union County. And the programs that work through the J-JAC Board are prevention programs and alternatives to detention programs, both of which save a lot of money in the long run for our community, both as fiscal agents and as also as personal money for parents, the county, the state, you know, way on down the line. And the programs that we have right now are basically based in Rattone, which has been very good for Rattone. They've been very positive, the Girl Circle, the Boys Council, Restorative Justice, they've all worked, helping kids stay out of the probationary pipeline, as they like to call it. You know, once kids get on formal probation, it's really hard to get them out of that system and get them back into being a regular kid. So, a lot of these programs, we get them involved in early to help them stay out of trouble, to help them stay off the probation rolls, to help them stay out of detention. And if you ever go to the city or the county council meetings, you know our juvenile detention rate is sky high. We have one of the highest juvenile detention rates in the state because we don't have a lot of services for our kids here. And this is one of the few prevention programs that we have that's going really strong. And Danielle's written this grant to expand it out into the rest of the county, the rural parts of the county, which don't have any services to speak of, and part of that is so that we can keep the grant because it is supposed to be a countywide grant. But as it's funded right now, it really doesn't give us enough money to get out of Rattone proper and out into the rest of the county because of, you know, transportation costs, extra staff that we need, you know, takes a whole day to get over to Angel Fire. So, this extra money that she's asking, that she's written into this new grant for 2015, it's just going to help us serve all of those rural areas, which on the surface doesn't seem like it's going to do much good for Rattone, but in the long run, it does because it serves the whole county, it saves money for the county, leaves the county a lot more money to work on grows and things like that, rather than locking up our kids, which none of us want. So, that's my perspective on it.
Thank you. And we also brought a participant that has been active in Boys Council to give his viewpoint of what he's learned in services, and just to be more of an informative act unto the commission tonight so that you are aware of what we actually provide in the services. And that is Mr. Juan Salanar.
I'd like to say your name. It's one of you.
My name's Juan Salanar, and I was in the Boy Circle.
Sorry.
And I came to talk about it, just to tell you guys, what I got out of it is that there's people there, always there that you could talk to, and in there, you could be yourself and not have to worry about everybody else judging you because everyone else is there for the same reason that you're there, to get things off your mind, to be around people that you want to get to know. What I liked about it is that most of these people that I went there with, I didn't really know, but in the end, like, we all pretty much got together like a big family. We joined together, we were able to talk about our problems in front of each other and not judge each other, and I recommend it to other kids because it's a good way to just talk about how you feel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Sure.
I'd also like to further share with the City Commission tonight that Juan has developed many leadership skills within the Boys Council, and the facilitators of that have been Adrian Duran and James Fahill. And we are at a point now that we are sharing awareness with the youth because the youth is at such a high-risk area and demand, and it's necessary to implement these services. As of past history, we are very thankful to the city. One of the founding fathers was Mr. Joel Patchi. He was mayor at the time, and he approved of the continuum to move forward. And at that time, I was told there were seven different counties that provided the continuum services. Today, it has expanded to 22, and we are very proud to be a part of that continuum. It is a federal grant, so it is reimbursed. We were disappointed that there wasn't able to be a fiscal management process fee this year, but the match requires that 40% is given back to the program through in-kind or other services, and I have developed an extensive tracking tool that will be tracking all of the in-kind given by the city, and therefore, that is accounted for and it will be given back into our community as well. We thank you for your time tonight, and we ask for an approval of what has been given to you in our grant application. And at this time, I'd like to open up the floor to any questions.
Yeah, well, you kind of answered my question about what was the requirement in the City of Rattone, and then I looked in there that we're required to do $6,000 worth of in-kind services. Mr. McGowan, you are aware of that, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
The other thing is, is that, so, are you a branch or an arm of SOI in your speaking? Do you work for SOI?
I don't, and...
I notice I see their name on here, and I'm just wondering.
Right. They are the partnering agency of CCJJ CAB. The program is ran solely by our executive boards, and our executive board includes Sue Fleming, it's Mr. McConnell, Steve McConnell, Steve Marcus, and Mrs. Martinez, and Mr. Terry Baca. And what they do is they meet monthly, and they decide on what programs they want to implement. They have done a strategic plan, they have followed all the protocol, and everything that they need to, to move forward. And they found that Boys Council, Girl Circle would be gender-specific services that would actually definitely focus on the area and the population that we need to serve here in Colfax County. So, as going back to that, I am independent, I work from my home, I do attend major functions, I will be attending a reform act breakfast, it's the JDAI prevented by the New Mexico Supreme Court this Thursday in Albuquerque, New Mexico. I work very closely with other continuum site coordinators, and most of them are independent contractors or they are reimbursed through the fiscal agent. And the reason for that is they felt that it was, that it was a conflict of interest for the coordinator to also be an employee of SOI because the services that they render should be separate from what the services of SOI renders. But SOI is doing a great job. They actually, they provide the personnel for the facilitators for Boys Council, Girl Circle, and Restorative Justice. I am the direct supervisor over all of the personnel, and we go to the executive board to make sure that everything is approved. And our grant application was approved through executive board members before it was brought here tonight.
And I don't have anything against SOI. I'm just wondering, I'm just looking at this. In fact, I was one of the original founders of that program.
Yes, it was.
Of SOI.
And they definitely have much input. Furman is valued for his input because he definitely started this program a long time ago, and now it's kind of more going into a different direction to where the executive board is the main decision-maker, and then the coordinator will do the reports and anything that needs to be done as far as referrals, intakes, assessments, evaluations, the list is ongoing. And then our partnering agency, which is SOI, are the ones that will hire the personnel to provide the services to take place. And the facilitators have done a great job. They've all been trained by OneCircleFoundation.org, and actually, one of our new facilitators is headed to Delaware, and he gets trained next week by One Circle Foundation, and then Cassie Phillips and myself will be attending the training in March of 2014. And we are headed to San Francisco to train in Girl Circle, and we've already received training in Restorative Justice. And even though I'm not a facilitator, I feel that it's very hard to supervise any employee if you have not been trained in that specific area yourself.
Well, you know, young lady, you're a pretty good ad-vocat speaker. You know, you might want to consider running for the commission in the future.
Thank you.
Does any commissioners have any questions of Danielle?
I have.
Sandy?
I used to sit on the board, and at that time, the direction of the board was trying to help people that were in, that were on probation or incarcerated or whatever you call them, call it, to make sure they graduated from high school. Are you still getting your referrals from the school?
Yes, the referrals have been high, and this is the first year, I'm so proud of it, that the Rattone Public Schools has allowed service to take place during school time. At the alternative school, we are providing services on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Tuesdays is Boys Council from 9:00 to 11:00, Thursdays is Girl Circle from 9:00 to 11:00. I developed all of the requirements that were necessary to also be able to provide a half-credit to these students for participating in our programs during school time. And what was required by the counselor was actually 24 hours of community service on top of meeting all the requirements for the core requirements. And with all the objectives and standards meeting that, we have came to a great place with it. The alternative school has had great success. The feedback from the facilitators is wonderful. Boys Council has shared that this is one of the most responsive groups they've ever had. We're also, we also have an active Girl Circle at Kearney right now with 4th and 5th graders, and we just completed a Boys Council group with Kearney with nine members, and that was done now in December of 2013.
So, are you telling me this program is still in place, that you're trying, that that's one of your goals, is to help meet the educational needs of kids that can no longer go to school with the high school or the junior high?
We don't have the learning laboratory anymore, but what we are doing is we are educating the students, and we're also intervening within the school systems because of the low graduation rates. We want to improve there in Colfax County, also with the New Mexico YRRS. The data showed significantly that we were much higher in high-risk behaviors than any other location in New Mexico.
Excuse me, I just, we're, the movement of the boards really gone more towards prevention, trying to get these kids earlier before they actually get onto probation.
Right.
And so, we're really looking to the schools, and they've been a great partner in getting those kids to us a lot earlier before they actually are out of school or they're actually on the probation rolls. We're really working more towards prevention and early intervention with them, more so than waiting until they're already on probation. Because we have a lot of programs for the probation kids, but we didn't have a really lot of things going on for prevention, effort to getting these kids early, and that's what we're really moving more towards now.
That's sort of what I assumed, that that was the direction you were taking. Are we still meeting the needs of the kids that are not allowed to go to school?
We've really worked, especially with Mr. Truhyun, or Dr. Truhyun, the new superintendent, and trying to get a lot of those kids back into school and opening the alternative school up to a wider range of kids than it had been in the last few years. They really had really narrowed it down to who they were letting in and who they weren't. And so, we're opening up a lot more for that, and especially now because there's really, there's no GED programming in our county anymore. There's no GED testing in our county anymore. So, we're really trying to, you know, express to these kids early on that you really don't have an alternative, you really need to stay in school and get your diploma the right way. So, that's what we're working towards.
Okay. Any other questions from any other commissioners?
Just a couple, maybe. What kind of success rate are you seeing with preventing kids? Do you track that at all?
It's really hard to track prevention.
Sure.
It really is. I mean, our referral rates...
Are you seeing some kind of turnaround?
Our referral rates are down considerably, whether that's, I mean, there's lots of reasons that go into that, but I really think it's making a difference for these kids to get a hold of them younger and get some of this programming going on and get them hooked up with mentors, you know, that they work with in the Boys Council Referral Circle. And the Restorative Justice is more what I deal with because those are the referrals that I send to her, and it makes a huge difference with the kids. I can only think of one kid that I've sent to Restorative Justice that's come back into my office afterwards. It's really good for them to meet face-to-face with their victims and to explain, have the victims explain the impact not only to them personally, but also to the community. Makes them understand a little more what their actions do to people and to the community as a whole. So, it's been really, really good, the Restorative Justice program has.
It is, and I'd like to further expand on the tracking. Monthly reports are submitted, they're called PRFs, and it's a progress report form. It tracks every program, and it tracks the participant's success rates, and we do a beginning survey, and then we do an end of the group survey, and that also helps with tracking and measurement. And we're also coming up with a tracking tool that we can access within the fiscal year of 2014, 2015 to measure that more consistently.
And then we follow those kids, and then we know which ones come into probation, which ones don't, so...
Thank you. Neil, anything else? You know, I think anytime that the City Commission can endorse a program that helps our children and tries to bring them up to par, I'm always for that. And with that, I would move that we approve this memorandum of understanding of the RRC. Is there a second to that motion?
It's up to lots more letters than that.
Oh, why do you want to say that again? CCJJ CAB FY15 grant application. That's my motion.
How long is that going to be?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
If we accept this memorandum of understanding, are we accepting the responsibility of being the fiscal agent?
See, what we have, and I'll address that in just a minute. You already know the answer to that, Ms. Matts, but thank you for asking anyway. We will not be allowed at this point unless something changes, but we have to approve it because they have a timeline to get the application in.
It has to do with our president's standing.
Yes, ma'am.
Our future. Thank you.
So, sure, yes.
And there is a possibility that we could, down the road, be the fiscal agent should all that paperwork get over. Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
opposed the same? Thank you. City managers report, board appointments.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, we have Nancy Poe for the Parks and Recreation, and Ms. Poe's here tonight. We thank you for doing that, and I would recommend that the commission do approve this.
You're an existing member?
No.
Are you a new, you're a new member? Well, thank you. Thank you for coming up and expressing an interest, and I would nominate, and I would say that we will appoint Nancy Poe to the Parks and Recreation. If the commission doesn't have any, any problems with that, then consider that an appointment. Okay?
Next item, Mayor and Commissioners, is the Witherly Charitable Lead Trust. It is my pleasure to announce that the Witherly Charitable Lead Trust, in memory of A.D. and Moselle Witherly, has donated $20,000 to the Rattone Aquatic Center, thanks to Mr. Carl Benson and Don Lark and everyone involved with the trust. Mr. Chatterley and I met with Ms. Lark, and at present, we're going to use $5,000 for landscaping to take care of the erosion that is happening at the aquatic center and put $15,000 in account, hoping to build upon it, that in the future, our hopes and dreams are to build an amphitheater there. As you know, they're looking at this summer of having Mr. McMurtry's involved and all with the car show, Mr. Reed and the Rogers and all is involved with Fireballs, going to be presenting, and so, we're trying to have something that would be an ever-year event and build upon it, and an amphitheater at that area, and is a hope and dream that we have, and $15,000 is we're starting on.
Make sure you extend our thanks to them for doing that.
Ms. Michael Anne has sent a letter and everything, and so, yes, and we are, like I say, working with Ms. Lark on that.
Thank you.
Update for the Commissioners, the Olpass Gallery, the Wells Fargo Building, we are going to bid on the roof and hope to award it at the February 11th commission meeting. Mr. Little, Mr. Berry, and Mr. Phillips have been putting this together. We'll try to address the outside wood, plaster, drainage, the ventilation, et cetera, in next year's budget. If we do have monies left over from the roof bid, we will put it toward the drainage this year. And so, hopefully, at the February 11th commission meeting, we will have a bid for the commission to approve it. Okay, the next three items, I'm going to kind of lump together, our audit, the RCI, and then the fiscal agent. As far as the audit is concerned, talking with Heinzville Meacham Company, Ms. Michael Anne has been working very closely with them. They'll have a draft report on the findings by January the 31st. They will schedule an exit meeting the week of February the 10th. I suggested to Ms. Michael Anne that try to get them here February the 11th, which is commission meeting day. The mayor needs to be there, and I would recommend, Mayor, that we have Commissioner Matts there, and hopefully, we will be letting you know. Of course, we'll have the Water Board representatives there, the RPS Board, the Housing Board there for the exit meeting, and soon as Ms. Michael Anne has that taken care of, we will let you know. But right now, that is...
What day is it?
When we're saying February 11th.
Okay, that's, that's the City Commission.
Yep, the day of the City Commission meeting. We tried to set it up that way, Mayor, knowing that you're in Vegas, and so, that you would be here that day and not have to be driving back and forth.
Thank you.
On the RCI, we have a contract with the RCI to get our capital fixed assets in order. They will be here January the 21st through the 24th. I promise you, Ms. Michael Anne and I are going to do everything and whatever is necessary and possible to get our audit findings cleaned up. We will also have RCI back here March the 19th for training, and then March 20th for reconciliation of getting our GNL reconciliations put together. We do not know how much time that is going to be. We'll be looking at it, and then trying to, we will get them back here also in June to finish up so that it will not occur on our next study. So, that's keeping you informed. Appreciate Ms. Michael Anne so much for what she's doing and what we're trying to do, and all the department heads and the people that are going to have to be working and getting this put together. Next item that goes directly with that is the fiscal agent. Until we get our house in order, with Governor Martinez's Executive Order 2013 006, or 2011, 2012 audit finding, as well as this last year's, will keep us from being a fiscal agent unless something occurs during this legislative session or she rescinds it and does something different. That's not going to happen. We're also, Ms. Matts, I've asked Ms. Michael Anne to look at the Northeastern COGS to see if they are going to be available because we are informed that there's several of the COGS that are not going to be able to be the fiscal agent because they don't have their audits in good shape. Hopefully, the Northeastern COGS will be, and we, maybe, we'll be able to use them. Just keeping the board informed where we're at, what we're trying to do to get some back areas corrected. Next item, Mayor, the election. Everyone has a copy of the candidates, position they are on the ballot. As everyone knows, the election will be March 4th. I know the mayor had asked, I know in the candidate's packet, it had a brief description of your political sign requirements, but also, Ms. Tricia has printed out at the press for the mayor all the information that you need to have for campaigning and what you need to do during the election, what you can do the four weeks prior to the election, and then what you have to have played in there within 10 days, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan, and the election is on the 4th of March.
Yes, sir.
On the 4th of March, it's the first Tuesday in March. But anyway, we, I asked the city manager to put together a packet together for all the candidates, and we have two, well, the first one you got, when you, whoever signed up, you know, they have the candidate's packet and on there, it'll tell you, you know, on the back about the signage and things of this nature. Then what we did is we got another one about the statute that pertains to elections and that on obstructing holding places, disturbing, so on and so forth, penalties and so forth. And I just felt it was appropriate for all the candidates to have a copy of this, so we do have a copy for all of that. And with that, I'd like to thank all the candidates that bothered to sign up and, you know, and run. I think that one of the things that I've done for the last six or seven months is encourage people to become involved and things of this nature, and the time, place to make a decision is up here, and if people have an interest or are vested interested, this is the place where decisions are made, and I want to personally thank all the people that signed up, Mr. Jacomo or Mr. Chavez or Mr. Simpson or... Those are the three. Okay. Well, and Chris, and of course, myself, but, you know, Commissioner Matt, she was running a post, but, you know, so, and I wish you all the best of luck, and I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate, being, judged by your peers is not the easiest thing in the world to accept or face or anything of this nature, as we will find out, you know. So, good luck. I just want to make another announcement, and that is that the New Mexico Legislature convenes on a 30-day session in, on January the 21st. It's only a 30-day session, the only bills that will be noticed or that will be introduced or acted on are money bills, so hopefully, Rattone will have some participation in that process and get some needed money for our economy back here. With that, I... Yes, sir.
Recognition, appreciation, and information. I'd like to thank Mr. Chatterley, Chief Matthews, and Ms. Pinoza, the park personnel, and everyone involved in the polar plunge. We had many participants, and especially women, and a large crowd to make it a success. Also, Chief Matthews reported to me that the new ambulance has arrived and should be available within the next two weeks. Going back to what the mayor was talking about, February the 7th is municipal day at the legislative session. You have that information in your packet. Please let me know if you're going, if we need to post a notice that there could be a war on there. So, if you will, please allow, or please let Ms. Tricia and I know, then we will take care of that. And if we need to do anything to help you set up anything for that, please let us know and we will do it.
I'd like to, you know, one of the things that we don't do, that I don't do very often, as often as I should, and I would like to thank Mr. Bush McGowan for taking on the job that he's done. I think you came into a hornet's nest, and I think you've done an admirable job, and, you know, and I just wish you continued success, and thank you for helping us here at the time that we need the help, and I appreciate that very sincerely. With it, anything else? Anybody? Commissioners, Sandy?
I received an email stating that Roberto Gonzalez, who is a Democrat from Taos and who chairs the State Transportation Infrastructure Revenue Subcommittee...
from Taos, and who chairs the State, uh, Transportation Infrastructure Revenue Subcommittee, uh, will be pre-filing a bill that would allocate four million dollars from the state's general fund, uh, for truck upgrades, upgrades in New Mexico, and a second bill to introduce, be introduced during the thirty-day session, uh, that would ask for four million from the capital outlay fund, which usually funds special state projects. Um, and so, we, we owe a great deal of thanks to Representative Gonzalez for doing that, and, uh, hopefully, it will do some good.
Yes, Commissioner Shaw will stop by my office today, and, uh, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Ms. Matts, and he was telling me, and I just, I told him that the commission, whatever that we needed to do to help once it is, has been presented by the representative that we're on board.
Uh, and the other thing is, the other good news is, uh, we have news that the state of Colorado has two legislators that are also going to be presenting similar bills in Colorado. So, that's good news.
Had you heard anything from Kansas?
No, those are the only two that I have at this moment. Uh, if I have a personal point of privilege...
Go ahead.
Uh, my husband and I have the honor of attending the, uh, recognition of our son becoming a Colonel and Illinois on the thirtieth of December. And, uh, we're very proud of that, and, uh, a lot of us in the family were part of that presentation, are part of that ceremony, and I, uh, put a happy bucky on that cuanis because he asked me to sing the National Anthem, and I almost had a heart attack. But I'm here to say, I sang it, and I hit all the notes.
Pass our congratulations on to your son, Lee. It's, anytime somebody from our community is, makes any headlines, especially in the positive sector, and we certainly want to acknowledge that.